Whenever you are, sir. Sorry, I didn't realize you were waiting on me.
We are going to open up our zoning case 2022-10Z at 8760 Montgomery Road. Scotty, you want to give us an overview?
Yes, sir. Okay, this is case number 2022-10Z. Applicant is SHP representing Kleinfelter Capital, who is proposing a single-tenant office building at 8760 Montgomery Road. The proposed development plan requires a rezoning from single-family residential to planned office as well as the approval of a SPUD plan. Okay? Excuse me. As you can see from the screen, the grayed-out area is the property, which consists of approximately 2.47 acres of land with frontage of about 185 feet of right-of-way along Montgomery Road. Okay? The topography of the site, it is a hillside with slopes generally running north to south. There is a developed, rather good developable pad right in the center. We'll get to that where the existing single-family home is. Proposed ISR is .193, so just over 19% impervious surface for the total site. This is the only reason it actually qualifies for the SPUD approval is because of the zone change and the requirement under that OO district. Just quick look at the topography as well as hydrology on the site. As you can see, the existing residence sits up to the north, central and north portion of the property, with drive coming out in the northwestern area of the frontage. There is a stream to the southeast, and that meanders along the rear of the property along that eastern border. The applicant proposes to essentially reutilize that building pad with the new office building coming in right over top of the single-family home. The majority of parking would be to the front with, I believe it's, seven covered parking areas in the rear, which are actually tucked in underneath in the basement. So there is no exterior parking to the rear. Driveway is the same driveway location as being reutilized for this as well. I'll blow this up for you guys. What you see here in green, the majority of that is actually, the stark green is actually existing vegetation. There's going to be minimal clearing to get this drive to the rear end, maybe on the southern side of the building. And really, that is about it. You're looking at, this is from pavement to rear of the property, you're looking at almost 127 feet with about, I think it's on average approximately 130 to 135 feet from the actual building to rear property line. Because of the extensive existing vegetation on the property, there will be, there's going to be some plantings in the front, essentially landscaping of the parking area as well as the front of the property. The majority of this, I believe, is actually existing. Existing trees are going to be along the boundary are going to be maintained. This is photometric plan. Not only is the applicant keeping the light sources central to the property, they're utilizing what are actually rated as, sorry, I'm trying to get over here to it. What are actually rated is dark skylights. This is actually big, you know, to the west. It's a rating that promotes minimal light pollution. So based on, let's see. They have spillage up here at the parking lot area into another commercial parking lot. I believe the maximum is .2 foot candles, where we typically allow .5. However, to the rear, you can see that foot candle spillage drops off even before you clear the, right here is a very faint line where you can see the actual driveway. So light spillage is only for security onto that paved surface. And you have about, I think at minimum, 125 feet of zero foot candles to the grid property and to any residential area. This is just another graphic showing the proposed site. This blue dashed area is the footprint of the existing single-family home. So you can see how that building pad is being reutilized. Here's this quick basic floor plan. You can see that there are going to be seven enclosed parking spaces under the building in the basement. Those are going to be used for employee parking only. So you're going to have very minimal driving behind the actual building. First floor reception, conference room, pretty standard layout for a financial office. Offices to the rear of the building. Owner's office here with the nice views. And then top floor, essentially break room, breakout area, training area. There is a, even though it's built into the, I guess the footprint of the building, it's under the typical roof line or under roof, there is going to be an outdoor patio, balcony of sorts. And you'll see that in these renderings coming up. So exterior is proposed to be brick and stone, 360-degree wrap. This is a two-story building with a residential roof. That is actually one of the new recommendations that the trustees approved in the vision plan 2030. And this plan is consistent with both height and design criteria that was specified in that comprehensive plan. This will be the south side of the building. I know it says, yeah, south elevation here. This is north elevation. This is what you would see from the dental office that's already active. And then this is the rear of the building. So you can see those garage doors for the enclosed employee parking. This is that patio area I was talking about. Couple of 3D renderings of the site. Again, aerial front view. The applicant is not proposing any signage for the building as part of this PUD proposal. They are proposing one freestanding monument sign at approximately, I believe it's 49 square feet, to the front in the front yard. That does meet all setback requirements. Here's that inset patio that I was mentioning earlier. There was one question brought up about exterior dumpster enclosures. There are no dumpsters proposed for this site. There is a retaining wall on the north side of this building that's required because of the significant drop from the front to the rear of this. There is actually, and I'll go back to the layout of the building, but this northeastern corner of the building is the stairwell that runs from basement to second floor. And this is the egress door for getting out of that stairwell. So there's only a retaining wall and then the actual foundation wall. That's enough for proper egress. That won't be a dumpster enclosure.
While you're on that photo with the patio displayed there, it doesn't look like there's any lighting in there. Is that part of the plan or do you know, within the patio itself eliminating outward?
You'd have to ask the applicant about that. But any exterior lighting to the rear would need to be, would have to meet the same photometric plan and style. So it's not to say you can't see light, you know. If, you know, we can be miles away and see a light, but actually having light shine on you is the foot candle measurement. So typical residential lights, especially consistent with what they've shown for exterior lighting, would not add any significant, you know, foot candle levels to the exterior. Just another area. There's a fireplace out there. I would wager that an actual fire would probably show more light than the actual designed LEDs. One thing I did kind of glaze over, there is a requirement for 16 parking spaces along with the seven enclosed spaces. They are at 21, so they meet that requirement. Landscaping is substantial on the site, especially with the existing vegetation credits. Signage at 49 square feet is well below our standard. No dumpster. The zoning commission met on June 13th to review this case. Again, there was one resident that attended that I've already spoke about his concerns for this as far as the dumpster enclosure. There was a concern about being able to see the roof from his house. And I have forwarded those emails to the board for their review. With that being said, this was unanimously approved by zoning commission that night. And with that being said, I also make a favorable recommendation to this. This is probably the lowest intensity development that's been proposed on this site, you know, in the last 10 years or more. It's very low-key. It's consistent with, I think, our vision for this corridor. And it would be an excellent example of a transitional use from a high-intensity highway, which is Montgomery Road, to the residential on Lundcrest and Concord Hills. So unless there's any questions from me, that's all I have.
Any questions?
Okay, no questions. If the applicant, if you want to come up and give us your name and address for the record and anything else you'd like to add.
I swear to God.
Yes, please.
If you swear that's something you're about to give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so you go ahead.
I do.
Name and address for the record.
Justin Cogger, President and CEO of Cogger Construction Group, 2020 McKinley Boulevard, Lebanon, Ohio 45036. Again, Mr. Kleinfelter could not make it tonight. He had a previously scheduled engagement with his clients. We had been hired as the design build contractor, working with SHP as architectural partner and working with Mr. Kleinfelter through this process. Again, we had tried to really be collaborative. And Scotty has been a huge help in meeting with SHP and our team and Mr. Kleinfelter as we've worked through the project. Really tried to put forth and present a project that was, that meets and exceeds all the expectations of this corridor. Knowing that there was a lot of different utilizations here, Mr. Kleinfelter felt that this is a beautiful spot. His kids attend All Saints, but it gave him an opportunity to create a first-class office for his business that can showcase his services, but also fit really well in the residential surroundings that back up to that. And as Scotty said, we tried to be very, very cognizant of that when we laid out the design, putting the new footprint almost directly over the existing footprint to address any of those concerns. But really excited about, again, a first-class, you know, Class A office building that meets the needs of his clients. Again, it's really low intensity. I mean, he operates his business really eight to five, and that's it, you know. So again, we tried to then also maintain the lighting levels, as Scotty said. We're not going to be having business at eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night. He's at 5:00. He may have a 6:00 meeting, and that's about it. So really trying to be cognizant of those aspects and put forth a great design that meets his needs, but also fits in with this community. So we appreciate the time, appreciate the opportunity. And any questions, feel free, fire away.
I don't have any questions.
You heard my question to Mr. Miller earlier about the lighting on the exterior patio upstairs. Can you explain what will be in there?
We haven't got that far along on the design, right? We wanted to get through this step, make sure this step was approved. But we'll definitely take that into consideration. Most likely, I'd say 99% certain we're going to have a couple downlight can lights. But again, I don't foresee him utilizing that space much after the hours. I mean, even when I meet with him, he's like, I'm out here at 5:00. I got five kids. I gotta get home. So I don't foresee him, you know, using that. But we'll definitely make sure that we adhere to any light spillage. But at most, it's probably going to be some can lights just for safety, you know, lighting in that space.
Where's his office currently?
It's up in Montgomery Road.
Hosbrook.
Hosbrook, yeah. Right at Hosbrook and Montgomery Road, one of the office buildings right there on 71. I forget the name of the office buildings, but it's the two that sit right there, Office 71 and Hosbrook.
Gotcha.
I mean, it's on the second floor there, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we will close the public hearing for zoning case 2022-10Z. And we have a 6:45 public hearing on our tax budget.
Okay, we're going to call our 6:45 public hearing for the 2023 tax budget to order. Tracy, are you quarterbacking this?
I am, sir.
Okay.
So, the 2023 tax budget was distributed to all of the board, so you can have time to review it. As you know, this is not an operating budget, but just a form we fill out for Hamilton County, basically so we can prove we do the taxes that they send us. So, it shows what we've spent, you know, actual spending for 2021 and first half of this year with estimates for the second half of this year and estimates for next year. So, if you have any questions, we'll attempt to answer them.
I think we had a couple of, I had a couple of questions with you as related to reductions, and you had explained that, you might want to explain that for the board as well.
Are you referring to reductions in the JEDs?
Yes.
Transfers?
Yes.
Yes. So, and that was the reason that the second page came out. The first one, there were just some errors on it. The, last year, as you can see, there was a, a large amount, much more than needed to be transferred. If you go back to that last screen there, Skyler, that you were just at, which was oh four, which was just one example. Next one.
Next one.
Yeah.
There we go.
So, you see there's 4.8 million transferred in and transferring over a $2.3 million balance. I mean, we do not need to transfer over that kind, carry that kind of balance in that fund. So, there was, there's no need to transfer that much in, which is why it was reduced to 1.5 this year. And next year, we're looking at transferring out of the JEDs with operations for that department coming out of TIF. So, that's going to be the difference there. You know, I, I think it, last year when we looked at it with these large transfers, I meant, they made the JEDs look much worse than they were. It was kind of scary, it's like, we're going to run out of money quick, but that's not necessarily the case. So, that was the reason for moving things around and change in transfers.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I had one. Tracy actually answered for me before the meeting by email, but I'll just note that if you do the math in here, the transfers from the JEDs are 1.9 million, 1.8 million of that is coming to the township. You explain the other hundreds of thousands is going to the CIC.
Going to CIC for the grant program.
Okay. And that's not reflected in this, of course?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
One other positive that, for budgeting purposes, I, maybe not positive because it's a result of inflation, but the interest income we're getting on our, on our investments, typically TIF money is going to go up significantly, maybe double or triple. It's not that big of a figure in the overall scheme of things anyway, but it may double or triple. But I suspect that inflation will eat us up in the expense side, offsetting what we make on the income side. So, this is just an estimate, and you never really know exactly how it's going to, how geopolitics and economics and everything else will play out, but it, you know, it shows that we have.
The framework.
Yeah. For the honor.
I do have a question, I guess, about the structure of this budget. This is more of a technical one, but is this maintained in books, or is this maintained in a spreadsheet that we plug the numbers into manually?
This is something that comes from the county. Maybe it's created a spreadsheet.
Okay.
And plugs in there.
There's a, there's a standard form that has the, you know, the, the actual, the first six months estimated, and then the estimate for next year. That's a county. But ours accounts and things are so much larger than it would fit on the one that the county presents us with, then we need to expand it onto a spreadsheet so we can report everything we've got.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there anybody from the, in the public that wishes to ask questions or good clarifications on this? If not, we will close our public hearing on our 2023 tax budget, and the meeting will begin at 7:00 P.M. We're going to call our meeting to order. If everybody would please rise for the invocation led by Chief Bennett.
Heavenly Father, let the light of your divine wisdom direct the deliberations of the Sycamore Township Board of Trustees and shine forth in all proceedings and laws framed for our rule and government. May they seek to preserve peace, promote national happiness, and continue to bring us the blessings of liberty and equality. We pray for a thoughtful, calm, and open discussion for all matters before us this evening. Amen.
Everybody, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If Mr. Porter would note that all three trustees are present, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from June 21, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Have we approved the June 21, 2022 trustee meeting?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwager.
Aye.
Mr. Weed.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any tonight, Skyler?
Yes, sir. We have one resident, Mr. Ed Morvind.
Erv.
Oh, I'm sorry, Erv. My apologies.
Erv, you want to come up to the, to the podium? Give us your name and address for the record.
Erv Morvind, 4704 Dunedin Avenue. I was here last meeting you had, telling you about the weeds that the people that's got the apartment complex, they're not doing anything about. They're seeding, they're just going to spread and be more weeds. They haven't done anything about their trees. I spent my $1,542 to have the stumps removed, at least they could have the weeds removed. And another thing, they're dry pond, it's not dry. It's going to be a mosquito mess. Jeff, my neighbor's back here, he can tell you, you can set out in your backyard and you're starting to get ate up.
Is that, is that the detention pond on the rear?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Southwest corner.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a dry pond, but there's water in it all the time. Now, I guess, you know, if you guys can't do anything about it, I'll have to call the Board of Health.
Okay. I have a call in to them to get, address some of the issues we got going there, and I'm just waiting to hear back from them, so hopefully we will get some resolution on that.
Okay, that's all I've got.
I'm ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Skyler?
No, sir. I'm sorry.
That's it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning report. Skyler, you're up.
Yes, sir. First thing I have for tonight is just the resolution from our, for our zone change tonight. This is, that's the wrong one. Sorry. This is a resolution for case number 2022. 2022-10Z, applicant is HSP, representing Kleinfelder Capital for a zone change to OO Planned Office District, as well as the approval of an SPUD plan for a single tenant office building on that site. Tracy, you have that resolution.
Yes. I have a resolution for the zone change and SPUD for Kleinfelder Capital in Sycamore Township and dispensing, dispensing with a second reading.
Do you have a motion?
I move. We approve the resolution as presented.
I second. I second discussion. I might just add that I've been here 27 years and I've walked that property a lot on different proposals as we've had. All of them were, appeared to be, at least to the residents surrounding, were offensive for one reason or another. I believe this is a great proposal. It's by far the best proposal. It's a low intensity and it's basically what we're looking for along Montgomery Road anyway, so from our land use plan. So I think it's a great proposal.
I'll add, I agree. This is exactly the sort of development that I'd like to see in the borders between our residential areas and our commercial areas alongside Montgomery Road and that corridor. It's perfect, really. It's the best possible thing that could go in there. It seems the residents adjoining it are apparently in favor of this, or at least not as opposed to it as they were previously. I think, Mr. Miller, though, we basically got all favorable comments from neighbors, didn't we, except one who wished it could have been a little shorter?
We have one resident who still has concerns, but certainly not the, you know, the forty-some that showed up to the last open house that we had for a different type of project.
And I did have conversations with people both on Linkris and on Concord Hills this past week, and everyone seemed very favorable about the project, so.
That's what I've heard from others, too. So I think it's a great project.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Same.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is 7990 Buckland.
Uh, yes, sir. So I believe in our last meeting, I kind of warned that we were in the big violation season. I warned we would have a huge list. I'm happy to report I was entirely wrong on this. So we did have, maybe a week after our last meeting, over two dozen properties that we sent violation letters out to. We tried to do it early in the cycle, and the majority of those property owners did respond, get their grass cut, or at least call us and say what was going on. So we're continuing to work with some property owners, but we've had, we've had some really good responses.
That's great.
With that being said, we do have two properties that need to be reviewed tonight. The first one is a junk motor vehicle. This is a, I believe it's an Oldsmobile, Alaro. Flat tires, out of, outdated plates, has not moved for quite some time. Residents have been unresponsive on this. This did come in from a complaint. So unless there's any questions, I have a resolution providing for the removal of junk motor vehicle in Sycamore Township, Hamilton County, and the proper disposal, storage, or impoundment of motor vehicle by implementing the procedure set forth in Sycamore Township Resolution Number 2012-14 and Sections 505.173, 505.85, and 505.871 of the Ohio Revise Code.
I move. We approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Skyler, do you, is that a rental property?
I don't have that information with me today. This was, this was put together while I was on vacation and I'm still catching up. I know that we have not had any response from, from.
Okay. I think that is a rental property. I think I know exactly the situation there, but, okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Question? Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Uh, next property should be no surprise. This is a vacant property that we had some very tall grass on. We went ahead and started the cycle again because of the unresponsiveness last time. We want to stay on top of this one, so we don't have that eyesore right on the corner of a prominent part of the township. So I have a resolution providing for and authorizing removal of vegetation, garbage refuse, and other debris, and declaring a nuisance for the property located at 7600 Montgomery Road, Sycamore Township, Ohio, 45236.
I move. We approve the resolution as presented.
A second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
All right. Aside from that, it's vacation season. We've, we've kind of staggered our staff so that we're staying on top of permits. There have not been any delays. We've been working with some developers who have been working on their zoning compliance plans from prior cases. Actually, I think I signed off on the last zoning compliance plan today, and those are pretty much caught up as well. So at least as far as day-to-day operations, we're, we're looking pretty good through the summer. And that's all I have today.
Okay. Any questions?
I do. Mr. Morvind spoke about the problems around the apartment complex, and it's a beautiful building, but the surroundings still needs some upkeep.
I agree.
Mr. Weedman said he's got to call in to, was it to the Board of Health or to the developer?
To the developer.
Okay. So Board of Health might be an option if there's a mosquito problem, Mr. Morvind. But what else can we do, Skyler?
So as I was explaining to the gentleman, so we are cognizant of this. We are holding back our final zoning approval so that they cannot get the certificate of occupancy. We're working with, it's not just a zoning issue. There's, you know, Doug Marath, our fire inspector. There's public health. Soil and Water Conservation District has concerns about the site. So there's, there's a number of agencies that have spoken to the building department saying, do not release that certificate of occupancy. They're operating under a temporary, and that's costing them every month. So, you know, they're aware of our concerns, and, you know, I'm hoping that they address those soon. We've, we have reached out. So, but the, the big thing to hang over their head right now is that certificate of occupancy. We could, we could fine them and start violations and end up in court, and it would take longer than that, that certificate of occupancy. We're not going to get any money from, from fines. It'll end up in, you know, court fees and more expenses with our attorneys than what we would get out of it. So the, the teeth right now that we have is that CO.
They're moving people in anyway, of course. They're paying.
They're paying extra to do that to the county, but they're able to pay extra to the county and move people in. So what ultimately is the remedy with withholding the CO if we
say you just can't have it and they've got a full building?
Short answer is they can't do that forever. There's a, there's a, there's a sunset on temporary COs. You know, they've, they've essentially paid for one for a certain period of time, and then they have to continually pay an upkeep fee for that every month. But the county will not let them, you know, just, just keep renewing those indefinitely. So there's, there is a sunset on temporary CO. We'd have to, I don't know what that, what that date is for the county, but it is out there. So that is looming over their heads.
You know, if there's a health concern, though, about mosquitoes from the pond, there may be a zoning compliance issue with the pond being wet when it shouldn't be. But is that something that should be taken directly to the Board of Health by anyone who's concerned?
They're certainly the ones that are going to be able to address it faster than we can. You know, they have the authority to go out on site and mitigate directly. We do not.
I think that's a detention pond, isn't it?
It's a detention, not retention.
That's what I said. It's a detention.
It's a dry basin.
Correct.
Yeah. So if it's got puddling water that's not properly draining, that's, you know, there's storm sewer violation issues and public health. So not to mention, there's a hole out front that retains some water, and that's not a designed detention basin. You know, that should be graded or filled.
Thanks. Okay. Any other questions? Sheriff Patrol report, Corporal Kidd.
No reports, sir.
We love those.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? EMS and Fire Chief.
I feel obligated to say no report, but I only have one quick thing. We've, we've had an influx in natural gas runs, and I believe that this is contributing toward the dry ground where it's getting dry and cracking, and it's breaking pipes underground. The runs that we've had has not been contributed to any construction or anything like that. It's just been random. So I'm just urging people that if they smell gas in their house or in the area, to call the fire department right away. Don't try to search around and figure out where it's coming from, because if it's a broken line in the, in their property, it could be following the line and going into their house. So it, it, it might not be a leak in their house, but it's just getting in the house. So call, call the fire department right away if you smell gas at all. And it does seem to be, with this dry ground, it does seem to be prominent that it can, pipes can be breaking as the ground's settling.
Okay. That's all I have. Okay. Questions? Roads Maintenance and Recreation.
I'm not going to be that quick. So we've had, we've been extremely busy. So as you know, on June 25th, we had the food truck rally. It seemed to be a success. I know some of the trucks did not do the business that they were expecting. I don't know if they got the people they were expecting, but I heard a lot of great comments about the whole event and how it went down and the food trucks and the band. So I think it was a successful event. This past weekend, on the 9th, we had the Remains Concert at Bechtold. That was a nice crowd there. I'd say 250, 300 people. Everybody seemed to have an enjoyable time. So we'll see how our remaining concerts go, but that was a good one. As far as roads, a road program in Kenwood Meadows, Prus is underway. They're probably close to halfway done with the curb. So they'll be finishing up the curb in several weeks or so, and then we'll get into milling the, milling the streets out. But we just ask people to be patient. I know they've dealt with a lot of construction over there because last year we had new water mains put in the air because we were going to be doing all this. So they've been under construction there for a long time. Larchview Plainfield moving along well now that we've corrected some problems with the subgrade over there. Ford's doing a great job. The curbs are being poured there. So they're about halfway done with the first half of the project. That, that project has been split into halves. Plainfield is ready as far as to be paved, but we're going to do finish paving all at once with Larchview and Plainfield. So we'll be waiting on Plainfield. We did discover something interesting today. We sent out our sixth payment for Larchview in a total $147,000 and some change, and it had not been cashed. And Debbie got an email a couple days ago from somebody claiming to be a collection, not a collection, the specialist for Ford Development in their, in their collections department, saying that, you know, we didn't receive the check. Can you cancel that? Send us another one. The address has changed. Here's our new address. Then they sent an email. She questioned me about it, and it said they wanted it to go to Ford Development Corporation in Atlanta, Georgia. I said Ford Development does not have any.
We know that.
So I called them and met with them today. They have no employees such as that. They have no office, no anything in Atlanta, Georgia. They even had their logo basically on the invoice that they sent. It was just stretched out a little bit. So it's, these people are getting pretty tricky.
Everybody's scamming.
For them to realize that we had a contract with them and that there was a check sent, I don't know how they're figuring that out.
Was the check, the check was never cashed?
No, it is still outstanding, so we have canceled it.
Good.
And we are resubmitting a new one that will be going to Sharonville, not Atlanta, Georgia.
Good.
But it's just another, you know, we've had quite a few, nothing like this with payments to contractors. We've had people, you know, try to pass checks at banks, but it's, they're getting pretty brave.
Yep.
Especially when a call, she, he called her up.
That's unbelievable.
That's brazen.
Yeah, very brazen. But just want you to know that with Debbie's due diligence, that was caught once again. So, you know, as always, we're keeping an eye out because it's, it's getting, they're getting trickier out there. Montgomery Road Sidewalk Project, you know, we, we met with the engineers. We walked that whole thing. We've talked to some homeowners. We need some easements there. That is underway of trying to get easements and some right away from a couple buildings, but that, that's moving along nice. And everybody that we've talked to is very happy about the program. So it's going to be very successful, I believe. We had a pre-con today with Ford Development to do that Donegal Wall, Headwall Project down in Dillonville, another head wall that has collapsed over there. So our Kemper Road Sidewalk Project, we met with, that's the one that we got the safety grant on. We met with the engineers and with ODOT and walked the whole development, the whole project yesterday. So we'll be going out for, so this is the, we have, we have to do engineer selection with that. So we'll be advertising on ODOT's website and doing selection on that. But if any of you looked at your Ohio Township News this month, on page 49, Sycamore Township, Hamilton County wins Ohio Traffic Safety Improvement Grant. The only township in the state to win it.
That's awesome.
Nice job.
That's, kudos. Steve and Choice One Engineering both helped me with that. As you know, we've put in four different grants three times on that one, so we finally got it.
That's great.
That's great.
It's, it's very nice to have. I had no idea we were the only township that got it. So that's, that's pretty good.
Pretty good.
Yeah. Now, I would like to ask for a motion to advertise for the illuminated street blade signs. We've talked about this before. As you know, in our projects, we've had the projects, put one at Sycamore, Kugel Mill, and we had the developer put one up at Happiness Way. So we are looking to continue that just on Kenwood, Montgomery Roads. So the Kenwood and Montgomery intersection, the Kenwood and American Way intersection, Montgomery and Hosbrook, and Montgomery and Galbraith, and there was one more that is slipping my mind, but we have five of them. We're, it's about $25,000 to $30,000 per intersection, and that can be paid for with TIF. That, that's our estimate, $25,000 to $30,000. That's what we've seen in the past. So we'd like a motion to advertise for that project to, to, to go out.
I move that we advertise for the project for the illuminated road signs as described by Mr. Callens.
A second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Now, I know we, we've mentioned the Veterans Memorial before. I know I've been talking with Tom Weedman about this for a couple of years now, and we have, we've talked to Kleinger's, and I've met with them. Steve and I have met with them and got a proposal from them. I know they have done quite a few that I've looked at. They were very nice. In fact, they did Silverton's. I know you all saw Silverton's when you walked in the Memorial Day Parade. So I think it's time to move forward with this and improve our memorial. And I think now that the roundabout is done, our park is improved, I think that corner right there is a perfect place to have it. We're going to have a sidewalk off of the street and one off of the parking lot for people to get to it. So I, I have a resolution authorizing a contract with Kleinger's Group for engineering services, services for the Veterans Memorial Project and dispensing with a second reading.
We have a motion.
I move. We approve the resolution as presented.
I second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I do have some questions. This cost stated in the contract is $37,200 maximum. That's beneath the threshold as to what we'd have to put out for public bid, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
This is for engineering?
Well, this is for engineering. Yeah, you wouldn't have to go out to bid for engineering.
Okay.
But over 50, you'd have to put out an RFP or an RFQ.
Do we have some idea as to what the anticipated construction cost would be?
Not at this point. We do not.
Not even a ballpark figure?
We'll find out.
We'll find out. I mean, it all depends on what, on what we're looking to do.
How big you want to make it?
You know, we've had preliminary discussions with them at best. So that, that's what this is going to do. We will get a construction estimate with this.
Okay.
And we can pay for that with TIF also.
Any other questions? Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman? Aye.
Next item on the agenda, Law Director Report. Clear up.
I'm not done.
No, I'm sorry.
You've used all your time.
I just want to let you know that we received our 250 500 Chevy trucks that we ordered in 2021 in the spring. We have, that's how long it's taking now to get a truck. Unbelievable. But they are very nice. We just received them yesterday. So they'll be put into service immediately. Also, we have crews out helping in Goshen. They've got so much damage out there. It's unbelievable. It's just totally overwhelming. There's so much. So we've been out there all this week. We were out there half of last week, and we'll probably be out there next week also. So.
I trust they got a lot of crews from all over coming in to work for the day?
What's that?
They got different communities all bringing their crews in to work.
Every day.
Yeah, that's great.
Every day. There's quite a few out there along with, I believe, Warren County came out and Claremont County. So.
That's great.
There's quite a crew out there, but there's so much, they don't even feel like they're getting anywhere hardly. It's really unbelievable. But they're doing a great job. So we've got three men, two trucks, and a mini excavator out there. So they're helping. And my last item is that we just received our recycling award. As if you remember, we got the best rate again last year, and we received a check for $16,232.85 from the recycling district.
Great.
That's great. I thought we just got a nice trophy. So that's nice that there's a cash prize.
A recycled trophy. Yeah.
Anything else?
No, sir.
I have a few questions for him. You know, I always have questions. So, a few things. I talked to Steve about this at the last meeting since you were away. There's a resident who brought this to my attention and to his, and I think to yours, about the crosswalks on Montgomery Road and Montgomery and Kenwood, on Kenwood Road, I guess also, but across from the mall, not having been completed by the contractor and possibly being a dangerous situation. Have we made any progress on that? I know Steve was working on that, but do you have any kind of update?
Yeah, I was working on it before that, and Steve did. Now I, but the crosswalk itself is in. It has been installed. So all we're waiting for now is the white edge lines. They have to put some edge lines on the one at Galbraith and Montgomery also. So I don't know what they're waiting for because there's not much work there at all. And I have a lot of money set back for them. So I would think they'd be eager to go out there and do that.
Yeah, good.
But the crosswalk is in.
Thanks. Another question that's popped up a lot lately because of all the storm damage and power outages, again, in big surprise, Heitmeyer Farms, where the power always goes out. People are asking again, can we get the lines underground? I know we've had Duke in here in the last couple of years, I think, to talk about that as an option. Any thoughts? Any changes as to that? Have we heard anything from Duke?
We have not heard anything new from Duke. I can tell you that Duke is not going to put the lines underground. It is so expensive.
Right. That has been my thought, too.
They will. They're not going to do that. You know, there was a program where they were coming out trimming trees, and they were supposed to make some changes and maybe run it somehow to make it redundant. But I don't know what happened to that. There's been so much changes in Duke. I believe that the people in there now, they're working in on this. This is the first time they've heard of it because the people that were working on it left. But, you know, I've had requests in several other neighborhoods, too. And I can guarantee you that Duke is not going to put the power underground in any neighborhood.
It's not going to. Right. And residents have asked, can the township contribute somehow to make that happen? My thought has been that would be horrendously prohibitively expensive.
And not to mention it's on private property.
Yeah.
So around doing anything. I mean, you know, they've seen us put it underground on the streets, but that's in right of way, and it's been paid for by TIF. I mean, we do not have the funds. If we used every dollar we had, we couldn't pay to put this underground.
That's been my thought, too.
I've worked with, on this point, I've worked with the last two government affairs people at Duke regarding this issue. And at one point in time, I want to say it was in 2018, they had a program they were trying to institute to put together, reviewing their data for those communities that had the most outages to try to determine whether it would be easier for them to put the electric underground instead of constantly going out to that community. And I had pushed hard to have Heitmeyer in that mix, and that program no longer exists. So the chances of Duke, as Tracy suggested, the chances of Duke deciding that they're going to put the electric underground at Heitmeyer is somewhere between slim and none for sure.
Yeah. The residents could probably pay for it, but.
That's prohibitive.
Tracy, are you ready to write a check?
Um, no.
Same here. I'll live with power outage.
I know. I know. Well, I mean, not to mention you just completely.
Everybody in the subdivision would pack a generator.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it'd be cheaper to buy a generator, for sure.
Yeah. Another question about the storms and brush pickup. The township after a storm, when you as Roads and Maintenance Supervisor declare a storm, quote unquote, the township picks up brush for a period of two days, I understand, is the policy. But.
No.
Okay, what is the point?
You have to call it in within two days.
Yes, okay.
You have to have it ready within two weeks.
Okay.
And we pick it up till we're done.
Okay. We need to get better notice about that on our website because after the last two storms, there hasn't actually been any published notice. So people just need to know to call in. Some have paid to have brush picked up, too, I think, because they.
Well, I know it's been on our website, and it's probably been in 10 different newsletters. So short of sending a letter to everybody's house, I don't know what else we could do.
Let me just suggest, when there is a major storm event, like the two we've had over the last month, if we could push something on the website the next day with instructions to people, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think they put some things out on social media as well. I think.
I put some things on social media about it.
And bathrooms, too.
Has she? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Let's just make sure people know about it because then people get angry afterwards, saying, well, I didn't know. I could have had it picked up. I had to pay for it.
We definitely get a lot of calls, so nobody knows the service.
Yeah. We had over 200.
Oh, I know Sharon was fielding a lot of calls. So people do know, but not everybody knows about the timing or what the rules are. So that would be helpful. And one final thing I'll keep you with here. We've talked about the apartment complex on Kenwood Road from a few different angles. But as you know, there's a resident who lives alongside Happiness who's seen a lot of commercial traffic coming through there. That resident's upset. I'm sure others are, too, because there are moving trucks that are driving down Happiness, passing the building, turning around, and coming back in the middle of the intersection. The hospital seems to have some deliveries coming through there. I mean, we knew that when Happiness reopened, some people would be happy and some would be unhappy. But we don't want this traffic through there. Can we do anything about that? Better signage, maybe, or even a temporary sign saying, do not go past this.
We could put signage up, but it's a public road. It's open to the public. People have to remember what it was like before it was closed down. There has always been cut-through traffic there. Unfortunately, the gentleman that bought the house and moved in, bought it and moved in after the road was closed.
Yeah.
So he's never seen the cut-through traffic. The cut-through traffic has always been bad. It's always had commercial. And, you know, there's going to be moving trucks for a while. I mean, that's eventually going to slow down for sure.
And once the moving trucks figure out how to navigate in and out of that building, you know, a few times, they're going to figure out, oh, this is how I access this brand-new building that we've never accessed before. I mean, that does improve. It's crazy at first, but it does improve.
No, I do think he had a legitimate complaint. When I seen the low boy, that low ride trailer come through on the back of that semi, I was a little shocked at that. But the moving trucks, I mean, it's just like opening subdivision. If you're going to have, open it up at one time and everybody's moving in, you're going to have a lot of moving trucks.
Yeah.
That will slow down. But, you know, it's really unenforceable, you know, unless you put a weight limit on it. And how are we going to enforce that? We don't have scales.
I know.
You know? And other than that, it's a public road. So unless our law director has an idea.
Can't.
Right.
It's a public road.
It's a public road. What are you gonna do? There have been cases on that. I mean, people have tried to keep those gravel trucks from going through. That happened in South Lebanon, and the court said, no, you can't do it.
The resident in question, he did contact us and speak to multiple people prior to even buying the house. The discussion about that, that road opening up.
Whether the road would be open or closed?
Yeah. It was made very clear. That road could very well be open and stay open. There's no guarantee.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Law Director Report, Larry?
I have nothing to report.
There we go. Administrator Report.
I'm turning it back.
Uh-oh, we're turning it back over to Tracy for the Administrator Report. We're in trouble.
Now, this will be much shorter. So for the tax budget, I have a resolution adopting the Sycamore Township Tax Budget for 2023, dispensing with the second reading and declaring an emergency.
I move we adopt the resolution as presented.
I second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Okay, now I have another resolution. As you know, we've talked about reestablishing the Resident Finance Committee. We have on our website, social media, we put it out in the newsletter to get people to send in resumes. We'll be collecting those as they come in. We have a resolution establishing a Resident Finance Committee to advise the Township Board of Trustees and dispense with the second reading.
We have a motion.
I move we adopt the resolution as presented.
I second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion?
I do have a few questions. I'm very happy to see us moving forward with this. I've been nagging Mr. Kellums about making sure we got to this. So this is very good. But the remainder of the board seemed to have a concern before about geographic distribution, I think, as to the makeup of this committee. I don't think that's necessary personally, and that's not in this proposed resolution, but I did want to make a point of that if either of you had a concern about that.
I believe that the Administrator is going to make recommendations on the distribution of individuals from this. And I'm sure the Administrator would probably take that into consideration, I would trust.
And we have put that in the advertisements and the newsletter that we know the people from all areas of the township.
That's good. We also, as with our old, this is very similar, by the way, the resolution and the bylaws to the ones from before with a few changes. But it notes that the committee members will be residents of the township, which we don't really define exactly what that means. That was a requirement before, too. And my view was, all of them were residents of the township. They lived in.
You know what a legal resident is, Tom. You do know what a legal resident is.
I'm just asking if there was purpose in defining that further.
If you live in Florida, if you live in Florida part-time, but you vote there, you are not a legal resident of Ohio. You know that, and I know. You're an attorney. You should know that. So there shouldn't be any question whether, you know.
Not exactly the case.
That is true. That is true. You know it's true.
That's your intent. All right. There's also not a quorum requirement defined in here. And we're saying the committee is going to have six members, one of whom shall be the fiscal officer, who'll serve as a liaison. I assume from that a quorum is going to be four people then by default as a majority. Is that correct, Larry? Or is that something we should define as to whether the fiscal officer counts?
Voting member would be three, right?
Three would be four.
Yeah.
I look at the fiscal officer as being a voting member.
It says fiscal officer who should not be a target.
Right. Okay. So three. All right. Just wanted to get some definition of that. Okay, thank you. I'm pleased to see we're moving ahead with this.
Any other questions? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Said, oh, you have under Administrator Report?
I just want to, of course not. I just want to let you know while we're talking about this, that we also have an RFP out for the Law Director position. That has been put on our website, on the OTA website, and the Bar Association website. The last thing I have is the audit was completed today. We'll be waiting the results of that. I know it was very tough on him this year. He was having a very tough time deciphering some information. Couldn't get the proper information that he wanted out of UAN. You know, we're back to bucks now, and it was difficult to get some of the numbers to jive. He was asking a lot of questions about a lot of things we're done. So the only thing I have besides that is purchase orders. So I have, and all these are already appropriated, so the funds are already in for all these. So PO number 22105-2, a blanket vendor for $5,000 for bunker gear for the fire department, and this is coming out of their fund. 22-255-8, World Fuel Services of $19,328.88 for fuel for the sheriff, and that is coming out of their fund. 22-253 for Gerber Collision and Glass at $20,611.64. This is repairs to our 2018 SUV, and we did receive insurance of $18,111.64. So I was just surprised at the fact that some insurance companies wanted to put $22,500 into a 2018 vehicle.
Just goes to show how valuable they are today.
The values are right now. So, and that is coming out of O4, which is road fund. 22-255, BME Mechanical Electrical Plumbing. This is for Station 93 HVAC repairs in the amount of $4,528. That is coming out of TIF. 22-256, a blanket vendor for Fire Physicals in the amount of $15,000. That's coming out of the fire fund. 22-257, Sims Township for a CX90 Case Tractor in the amount of $15,000. This is coming out of TIF. So this is a tractor that they had that we have bought attachments for, and we were sharing. They would use the tabs, we would use the tractor. They are buying a new high-dollar tractor. So I said, yeah.
They love him.
We love it. So we'll take this one, which works great for us. And 22-226-4, a blanket vendor for planning and zoning contracts in the amount of $8,000, and that's coming out of General Fund.
We have a motion to approve.
We approve the purchase orders that Mr. Kellums just presented to us.
I second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
So one quick final note. We'll probably be coming back at a couple of meetings with some appropriations. We're going to have to shore up things like, we don't have enough money to cover the school TIF payments, Medicare, payroll, zoning. None of those had enough money appropriated for them before the first of the year.
Okay.
Question for Mr. Kellums. Is any of these finished?
I have finished.
All right. I just got one clarification that he did. The PO for the Fire Department Physicals, it's actually for our medical director.
It's for what?
The medical director.
Medical director, that's right. That's what it said on the.
Okay.
On the state of V.
Okay. A few questions. First.
So let me ask you a question.
Sure.
So is that still a blanket, or was that made out to the medical director?
It's made out to UC.
It's made out to UC physicians. That's who he works for. But when you say Fire Department Physical, I was thinking, when the physical bill come, they're like, got another one.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
No problem. Questions?
Okay. First of all, I'm glad we have the Law Director request out there. I hope Larry's flying. Hope you already have, actually. But the Administrator search, I'll remind you again, the board voted December 9th to begin the search immediately. We went through that process, did some interviews. Several meetings ago, I mentioned a potential headhunter to you and suggested you contact that person. We need to get this search moving forward. Have you been able to contact that person or some other?
I have contacted him. We've talked several times, exchanged ideas. He is going to have a proposal over to us probably within the next week.
Great.
He said that he would assume that the price for that's going to be $18,000 to $20,000. I know he's doing several searches in the area. He does a lot of those. This is right now. The market's slow. They're searching hard to find people. This is right now, the market's slow, it's, they're searching hard to find people.
Very good. Glad we're moving that along. And one other thing just we need to consider is, apparently our own internal policy as to the Juneteenth holiday doesn't necessarily jive with state law on that. We're gonna need to update that with, possibly with our handbook, too.
Okay. It's already in the works.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Fiscal Officer Report, Rob?
Yeah, we had receipts of three hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-four cents, dispersments of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eight cents. A complete listing of all receipts and dispersments is available in the packet for your review.
We have a motion to approve.
I move we approve.
A second.
Motion seconded. Further discussion? Mr. Porter.
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Next item is trustee comments. Tracy, you have anything?
Well, a lot of my comments Mr. Kellums already made, both his team and our Parks Department have been, or our road crews, our Parks Department have been extraordinarily busy between storm cleanups and helping Goshen and producing events in our parks. So thanks to all of the team members that participated in that. I also wanted to make mention that, for those that may not know, there is a One Ohio opioid settlement, an eighteen-year payout coming to the state from a lot of opioid pharmaceutical manufacturers. The State of Ohio won a, basically a class action lawsuit, which means for the next eighteen years, every municipality will be receiving a portion of funds. I believe that first distribution was sent out this week, so we should be getting that here at the township. I think our share is about five thousand dollars annually.
Just over five thousand.
So that should be coming soon, so just to know, for those that might be keeping track of that, those funds are starting to roll out.
Yeah. You know, on that subject, we just got notice of that, I talked to Mike Tar, Chief, and Larry about that, for what, I believe we have to pass a resolution for that now, and what we can use those funds for.
Yeah, there's some very specific...
Very specific.
Things that those funds can use for, yeah.
It's just over five thousand dollars, and they said it'd be coming out. They're starting this week.
They're starting.
Yeah.
Do we have to set up a separate fund for it?
We have to set up a separate fund.
Okay. And we are working on the resolution.
Great.
Good. Anybody else?
I think, everybody come to movies on Saturday. Movies in the park, so those are up at our Northern Park, McDaniel, and we had concerts last week, we'll have movies this week, so everybody come on out. I think the weather's gonna be spectacular, so I hope everybody can come out and watch the movies with us.
Okay. Not much to add. We've got a great team on the staff here, and that's great, the work that the township and our staff is able to do in Goshen to help people there who badly need it. As Tracy said, also, we've got great events going on in the parks this summer, movies is one. We've got more bands coming up.